My daughter.
I remember how to get that.
This might be the first time she goes with her friends and not her parents.
It's one of those.
And it's been quite a day. But if I could, um, I'll come down.
We came up here so you got it in your business. Cause that was my next question. So.
When you.
When you. I've seen how this is a whole series. It might be going similar to most other things.
Why are you leaving?
It's very different. Um, which is the second or third page you were just on your packet. So it's just basically. That would be a little big.
It's supposed to be.
Right. Be also offering any sort of, um, like reporting that you asked about. So like for instance, there's. If you try to take more share.
It was like a.
Election stuff.
Which is like.
All we gotta do is.
Mostly election stuff, um, which we just did. Uh, small. Okay, so part of that, part of the election. So she'll report on that.
No, we have to have home for two, but they were.
So any other city man or, um, some kind of man. Well, as long as it's a way to access information, that's a good thing. At these meetings, different cities, um, maybe their staff take it from there, kind of enforce things, make things happen.
You really have a.
A little bit, please.
Okay, at this time, I call to order the regular city meeting of the city commission for August eleventh at seven P M. If you do not have any recognition, at this time, I will invite Dan up for, I'm sorry, my apologies. Uh, we do the pledge of allegiance and you were ready.
I was ready. I was already ready to do the invocation. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now at this time, I'll invite Dana for the invocation.
Good evening, it's good to be back here, it's been a long time.
It has, thank you.
And I've been in Buchanan for the last almost fourteen years serving here, so. And at St. Paul Lutheran Church where we have a car show and picnic in September, second Sunday of September, so invite everybody to that. Last Sunday, we heard this, these words from Psalm thirty-three. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen as his inheritance. The Lord looks down from heaven, he sees all the children of man. Our soul waits for the Lord, he is our help and our shield, for our heart is glad in him because we trust in his holy name. Let your steadfast love, oh Lord, be upon us, even as we hope in you, we pray. Lord God, we thank you for the, the work that is done by this commission, for the, the efforts they have to care for the city. We pray that you would guide this meeting, that a good sharing, a good movements will take forward as we accomplish all things for the good of the citizens of this, this place and for all who might visit as well. We commend them to you, Jesus, our Savior, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Alright, this time I'll take roll call, please.
We do.
Yes.
Swam.
Present.
George.
Here.
Money.
Present.
And Vianzki.
Yes.
Form.
Thank you, at this time, I'll take a motion on the agenda.
So move.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
All in the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will take the public comments, please keep your comments to three minutes on agenda items only and approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Maybe. Everything seems to take a hundred years before you think about replacing it here in Buchanan. Oak Street is pushing it. You finally got Front Street done, would you leave the corner between, um, okay, Front and Oak?
Hey, Norma, is this, is this on an agenda item?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna have to save that today.
Oh, you're gonna listen to me, oh, you'll hear me.
I can't, I can't wait, Norma, thank you so much, just to stay in, in compliance here, thank you so much. I, we'll keep an eye on you, Norma, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, nobody approaching the podium for agenda items for the public comment, at this time, move on to the consent agenda, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
Mr. Money, I'll support.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We do not have any scheduled matters from the floor, at this time, we will do reports by departments, committees and boards, the clerk department for August fifth for the special election.
Alright, so just something, everything went really well, except for turnout, um, as you can kind of see, I kind of broke it down by precinct and then, um, A B ballots and in-person. A B, obviously, we had quite a bit of those, um, they did process the precinct, they didn't run a separate board, so it kept them a little bit preoccupied, but not much. Um, turnout was only twelve point seven percent for the city, so twelve point seven decided for the library, and it did pass, so yay for them, I hear that. Um, I don't know of any other ways to push voting, I know that construction, I know some people were a little angry when they walked in at times and got a couple of phone calls, but we tried to make sure that it was accessible, we had spoken with construction crews, uh, Mike had made signs, they had the holder open, they're still out apparently. But, um, overall, it was a good day, we had no problems, we were first into the county, so it could have been worse, we could have been Bertrand Township with only fifteen people showing up in person, and it could have been worse, says Niles Charter Township, only had six people show up in person, so at least we had the, we had decent turnout for the day for.
And what was the total number, just for the record?
Uh, for us?
Mm-hmm.
A hundred and forty-nine in precinct one and a hundred and thirty-seven in precinct two. Do that math for a moment, I tell you.
Two eighty-six.
Two eighty-six.
Pathetic.
Yep.
That's, that's working.
Yeah, I mean, we.
I agree with you.
Two hundred and.
Yeah.
For the, for the amount of, uh, conversation that happened online and the, the, that, that.
It just proves how minor that noise is on Facebook.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so don't take that as verbatim for how, how the community feels, so, if, if you want your votes to matter and you think that Facebook is, is the gospel, well, it's wrong, so.
It overwhelmingly passed, so, right for the library, they don't have to do one in November, but while I'm here, we do have a November election coming up, uh, for L M C, there's two proposals, we should be getting ballots used here in the next couple of weeks, so we'll let you guys know what's coming next.
And just for everybody's, uh, knowledge, those are, have a direct impact on your taxes, and if you don't think they do, then we will be happy to provide you with information that gives you clarity in that, just for the record. Okay. Uh, at this time, we'll move on, we do not have any unfinished business, we have new business, uh, Redbud Roots, consider the permit renewal for grower class C Redbud Roots at four four eight Post Road.
Thanks, Mayor, hello, everybody, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director, a couple of things for you this evening that I need action on. Uh, first thing is, we have a, uh, application from Redbud Roots for their permit renewal for grower, grower class C, um, at their facility located at four four eight Post Road, we have received their complete application, uh, we have conducted the background checks per the satisfaction of the maintenance department, and we have received their fees, so my recommendation is for approval for the renewal for the annual.
Yes, I need one.
Very good, thank you, Rich, um, at this time, I'll take a motion on Redbud Roots renewal.
I'll move to approve the permit renewal for grower class C Redbud Roots located at four four eight Post Road as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
Second.
Thank you, and discussion?
Is there anybody here from Redbud tonight? Oh, hi.
The associations.
You still got several facilities out there, don't you?
Yes.
Are you gonna, are you gonna, spit it out?
You can do that.
Are you gonna continue to renew your, all your licenses that you have, or do you know at this time?
As far as I know right now, we're gonna continue, um, that could change down the road as we, you know, we could consolidate, but right now, we're going strong, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep it going.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Vianzki.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
And Swam.
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you, okay, moving on to item B, C D B G and Foundations, Northside Neighborhood Home Repair, uh, bid tabulation and request for approval of notices to proceed with bid awards with project contracts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As you know, uh, with funding provided by C D B G, Community Development Block Grant and local foundations, the city, uh, Buchanan in conjunction with InFocus, the nonprofit group, uh, has launched the home, Northside Home Repair Program, so. Uh, we'd again like to thank our team from InFocus and all our phone, funding partners, both C D B G and the local foundations, which include Michigan Gateway, uh, Community Foundation, Corwell Foundation, A E P Foundation, Hunter Foundation, for all their financial support of the program. Um, since launching the program, we've advertised the program, uh, we've had community engagement meetings with Northside homeowners, uh, we've reviewed their submitted applications, we've worked with the residents to identify and prioritize projects, and from there, we went out for two rounds of bids on the projects, and we're here tonight to request, uh, approval of the bids and contracts to proceed to construction. We're excited to present eight home repair projects, um, that will have a big positive impact on the Northside neighborhood. The idea is to assist immediate health and safety concerns, but also help homeowners stay in their homes and build equity, um, so, uh, we're excited, this, it's a, you know, we're a small town, this is a neighborhood, but this is a, a big, uh, punch, economic punch in the neighborhood, and we can hopefully, uh, have, um, people stay long-term in their homes, so. This is part of our ongoing effort creating, uh, and maintaining strong neighborhoods in Buchanan is going to be, is, will continue to be a strong, uh, higher, highest priority for community development. So, um, Sonya Matelli, who, uh, has worked for several years in this capacity, uh, for the city of Niles, has been working with us for the last several months, uh, she is here tonight, is happy to, uh, run through the bids, if you have questions, uh, on them, however much detail you'd like, but she has reviewed the bids and, uh, provided in your packet the, uh, necessary documentation. We'd like to, uh, proceed for many projects we can before the snow flies, so, uh, we're excited to get started, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for you guys.
My, my first, my first question, I'm a big fan of this, but how much did we approve total, and how much do we have left, or do we have any left? Just trying to remember the full numbers.
Yeah, you wanna come, come up and, and address the numbers questions? I have that. This is Sonya Matelli.
Hi.
Welcome, Sonya.
So we're asking to approve, um, just about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars between the two funding sources, um, we have them broken down between the C D B G grant and the foundations, um, so, C D B G, we're asking for fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen plus decking, um, for the roofs, as we get into the roof, uh, we have to figure out if the board underneath the shingles is in need of repair, so they can't tell us upfront how much that's going to be. Um, and then for the foundations, we're approving sixty thousand, or we're requesting to approve sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and that's really in line with what construction prices currently are, is in the market right now for those types of projects.
How, how much do we have remaining?
Available?
Yeah.
Uh, the C D B G grant was three hundred thousand, forty thousand was used for, is being used for administration, um, so we have roughly, um, two hundred thousand dollars left.
Very good rate, there's still a lot of opportunity to make an impact.
Lots of it, yeah.
I've always had a problem with these because it's usually inflated, and soon as I see a partial roof replacement for nineteen thousand dollars.
Yes, that's a great question, so that's a metal roof, um, the owner of the house actually, um, tried to do it himself and was able to replace half of it, so we're going in to replace the other half, and we have to match the color.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that, the foundations, twenty-five thousand dollars, what are they doing?
These are all a variety of projects, so they have multiple projects that we're working on, they include, um, H VAC, um, uh, shh, shh, excuse me, uh, siding, um, gutters, soffit, fascia, um, there are, there are about four projects packaged into each of those two projects.
Okay, so it's not just the foundation, it's exterior.
It is.
And then, and I guess as long as I'm asking, how much cheaper would it be to take that metal roof off and just replace the roof?
Um.
And with shingles?
It's hard to say, because they would have to remove everything as well, um, and I don't think the homeowner would want that, um, but we're getting estimates for roofs anywhere between, um, six thousand plus decking, all the way up to about fifteen thousand plus decking.
Right, for a whole roof, that's why I ask.
Yeah, i- his house is a little bit bigger than the other ones that we're serving as well, um, so I don't know, you know, how to factor that in as well.
And I think the metal roofing in general is a little bit more expensive, but the longevity.
I know, but do you take that into consideration, just because they want it, doesn't mean they necessarily.
No, we, we don't take that into consideration, we go with what they want, uh, in the, in the roofing situation, because you have up to forty thousand dollars on your, on your program.
Okay.
And that gentleman will also, um, if over ten thousand dollars in the C D B G program, you actually also have to take on a lien, so they'll have to take on a lien for that project, it's a five-year forgivable lien, but they have to take on a lien as well.
The, the contractors you get, like, let's say for the metal roofing, do you reach out to them, or do they?
We reach out to the contractor, we do.
You reach out to the contractor?
We do, yes, we do all the bidding, they have to follow our rules, our guidelines, and they have to be licensed contractors in the state of Michigan with insurance, that includes workers' comp, so that if anybody gets injured on the job, we're not liable for it as a city.
Great, very good. Okay.
Good questions.
Thank you very much, I appreciate all that information.
No problem.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion on the agenda item.
Well, this is money I'd move to approve the approval notices and the project contract as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Vianzki.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Thank you very much, alright, moving on to item C, Reinvitalization and Placemaking RAP Grant with M E D C, consider the allowing city manager Tony McGee is authorized signer for the RAP grant pertaining to the Buchanan Downtown Infrastructure and Placemaking Initiative Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is more an administrative, uh, action more than anything, um, we, as you know, received a million dollar grant from the M E D C, we've done our, uh, kind of due diligence work for that grant, now they're moving to final paperwork, yeah, I think he has, hopefully have that might do us in September, October, what this does is just designate me to be the signature on that for the city when we have to do that grant right back.
Very good, okay, alright, at this time, I'll take a motion on the agenda item.
I move to approve allowing city manager Anthony C. McGee to be the authorized signer of the RAP grant as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Vianzki.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Money.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item D, Expenditures, consider the expenditures for August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
There was really nothing come up, there was multiple staples, checks, if you noticed, but they've separated that, I talked to, I didn't actually talk to Tony about it, I talked to Courtney, and it's separated, so now we know what section is using how much money, so it's not just one of them sum, so, if you want me to, I'll move.
Yes, sir.
To approve the expenditures and the amount of sixty thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-one cents as presented.
Very good, do we have support?
Mr. Money.
Mr. Money, got it.
Ah, go ahead.
Very good.
Fight over, draws, draws.
Yeah, I just, one quick comment to the commission, you may have noticed it, uh, but you'll see that the budget actual reporting is much more detailed now, um, and I'm trying to remember the exact thing, and I lost my train of thought there for a second, that we've started breaking out by department more thoroughly. Tony, thanks.
Some things are actually.
It's gonna drive me nuts now that I can't remember, but it's, you're gonna be seeing a much more detailed report going forward, um, allocations and how much each department, uh, oh, like, like the farmer's market's broken out more, and, and different groups like that, um, again, just so more granular level of understanding of funds going forward, um, that was a lot of work by the finance. And once again, that, for the public's notice, that, that is to continue to be transparent, I realize that we live in a world where the book of faces likes to tell everybody that we're not transparent, that we don't give all information that is available, and I will promise you, in the years that I've been on this commission, we give more information than has ever been given to the public, regardless of what is said online, and to have granular information down to the fact that we, what we spend at the farmer's market, how much money they generate, uh, from the vendors that come into that, uh, situation, that's something that, farmer's market may be something that you don't give any consideration to, but if we're getting granular with farmer's market, you can only imagine what we're doing with every department, from, from the D P W to the police department, the fire department, so, um, thank you to the finance department, and, and thank you to the city staff for, for working so hard to get us that information and to, to make sure that the, the banker on the group is happy with the information we're getting, cause he, he definitely details it out along with Mr. Vianzki, so we, we appreciate that.
Very good, uh, roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Vianzki.
Yes.
Thank you, alright, moving on to communications, we do not currently have any communications, Norma, we are on to public comments.
It's my turn.
Please keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record.
I hope you can understand me fast talking.
It's three minutes from start to finish, so.
We're gonna, we, we had twenty seconds taken off in the first time, so.
Yeah, watch running.
Can you understand me?
We did, I think we got that loud enough there.
Norma, three zero four North Oak Street, and I'm complaining about Oak Street, I've had more traffic, semis and construction than Oak Street has had for a long time, we're used to school buses and we're going to be shortly, so get your grant pencils out, we're gonna be a hundred years old. Could we have some help, how old is our water and sewer lines if our street is one hundred years old? Help us.
We'll answer you in our comments.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. I've heard that one before.
Thank you, Norma.
Uh, I just wanted to inform everyone that tomorrow night at six o'clock out at River Saint Joe, we will have a ribbon cutting for the trail, the trail is ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent complete, and, uh, we scheduled this a while ago, so, um, I've been out of town and, uh, just got back in last night at two thirty in the morning, so I'm a little short on some of the details, but, um, it's complete and we're ready to go, and, uh, commission is all invited, as well as the public. Um, we'll have the ribbon cutting, and then we're encouraging people to walk the trail from River Saint Joe down to Shimmer Parkway Parking Lot and back, of course, it's also scheduled to rain at that time, so bring your, uh, umbrellas or rain jackets. Um, second thing is also to do with the trail, uh, trick or treat on the trail, last year, we had seven hundred and eighty kids and about that many adults, um, it's scheduled for October twenty-fifth, we have all the parking arranged, that's usually our biggest problem, but Clark Lab and Edgewater have agreed to let people park, so we're in good shape there. Our biggest concern this year is gonna be the price of candy, we have not taken, um, any money out of the, um, trail, um, maintenance fund for that, we hope not to do that again this year, I personally will be going around, I've already, um, got commitments for about a thousand dollars, but last year, we spent about three thousand dollars on candy, and everybody knows what the prices have done since last year on candy, so, um, I don't want a kid going out there with half a sucker, so, um, if you know any businesses or anything, or if you could feed me any leads, um, I'd be glad to call on them and, and, and get that funding, because we do not want to take any money out of the, uh, trail fund. Any questions?
You'll purchase the candy if you get donations?
Yes, sir. Yep. We try, we, we try to do it local, but, um, they, they don't have enough volume usually, they, usually, we end up buying from them, if we're like three-fourths of the way through, and we see our candies running short, we'll run up and, uh, Dollar General and Family Dollar and, uh, buy what they have available, so. Did you have a question, Dan?
No, I just, um, I thought he was talking about, I threw a couple of big bags up at the senior center, cause you have a collection point up there.
Right, they'll be around town, I'm not exactly sure where they'll all be because of the construction, but we'll, we'll be getting them out.
And I mean Sam's Club, it sounds massive, I know it's not local, but you can get a lot bigger bags of candy at Sam's or Costco or.
I think last year, two of our committee members went to Costco.
Yeah.
And bought about twenty-five hundred dollars worth there.
Right.
And then we finished up the other five hundred here locally, and we'd, we'd love to do it all locally, but, um, it's just not doable, so.
One piece of candy or three?
That's right. Any other questions? If anyone asks you the question, are dogs allowed, dogs are not allowed, I don't care if it's a cute little puppy, um, some people get really angry because their dog is a good dog, well, if a three-year-old kid is wearing a gorilla mask and goes up to a dog and reaches out, you just don't know what's gonna happen, even if it's a good dog, I know they're all good, but, um, if you ever get asked the question, please respond, no dogs allowed, last year, last year, we had somebody, um, pull in a wagon, a pit bull, and had a blanket over the top of it. Unbelievable.
Can you put that on your flyer and, and your, uh, P S As and stuff?
Yep, it's already there.
Oh, it's already there, yeah?
Yep, Emma, Emma did.
I didn't know if it was there last year.
Yeah, it was.
What, was it?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I, I remembered the incident, but yeah.
Very good, thank you, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Oh, if anyone's in, uh, wants to know, I was in Alaska and the border is safe.
Alright.
In the salmon or running?
They let you back in.
Yeah, the salmon or running.
They let you back in.
Yep, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Colleen Morris, three oh five Fulton Street, Northside, um, Fulton Street has become horribly affected by haulers, um, the, the empty tray, the empty, um, semis for the, for the croppers, they bounce up and down the roads starting at three thirty in the morning, we already have to deal with I N M, I get that, but isn't River Road more of a truck route than Fulton Street, which is actually residential, and there are children everywhere, present, riding bicycles, so I don't know, it's, it's annoying, we got the scrapyard people, and it's, is, is it really a hauling street, is it really zoned for the, for the heavy lifters, besides I N M, keep in mind, but it's getting exceedingly busy, I mean, the, the, the car traffic, the thoroughway from our residents, all good, it's just these haulers, and we get the semis, huge semis, some, they, sometimes double haulers, it's just a lot. Like today, I witnessed like three guys going down to the scrapyard, they're flying down there forty miles an hour, you know, we do love our neighborhood, and we're trying to revitalize it, and we love our neighbors, and want everybody to be safe, it's wonderful to see the children outside, so, just an idea to bring forward, to think about.
Thank you so much.
If you do in no thoroughway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just for the purpose of that conversation, I had been contacted as well to have a conversation with, with the city manager, so I had not shared that with you yet, but we will have conversations, and it had directly to do with Fulton Street, so thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. Okay, seeing no public comments, uh, we'll move on to executive comments, uh, city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll start off with probably the most important thing, Mike is unfortunate not here tonight because of his affair, but his daughter's, uh, Gary from Market Go, one grand champion. Grand champion, huh? He was very proud of myself for the reward, they signed him, much shit, I missed it, let you guys know that, a couple of other things, Stranger Winery actually opened this weekend very quietly, but I talked to both, and they had a very good weekend, said they have both good crowds, Saturday and Sunday, um, they're off, they're heading up north to be re, be reopened, starting Friday, Saturday, Sunday this week, and I'm looking forward to. Looking forward to their second weekend, so please come visit them, they're doing a nice job, it's a nice space. Rich and I actually had interviews today with New Braunfield Redevelopment Authority consultants, we were supposed to have two today. One of them got shingles unfortunately, which you might imagine, you got shingles vaccine, and then after that, we'll get them interviewed this week. Plan on bringing a recommendation to you guys at your next meeting about a consultant for Rockford Redevelopment Authority to move forward, so we get that stood up, moving forward. With this redevelopment, we expect to see here pretty soon. Quick, I have a feedmill property, there's still little dirty contaminated soil that hasn't been cleaned up yet. That is being cleaned up via an insurance claim from the former owner of that gas station there, so enough out of the pocket of the city. Once that cleanup is finished, which should be next month or so here, we'll get that on the market with an RFP for redevelopment. We had our joint sewer water board meeting this morning, so went over the report of potential options for expanding water and sewer out into our joint townships. We'll start meeting with them and talking about those opportunities there. Emma's not here this evening, but she's done a fantastic job this last three or four months with the disc golf group, uh, working on things on that. Bill with the community group has been working on with him, has been doing exceptional work. They had twelve pads poured last week, they have cleared up stuff in their pour the last six pads this week, so once our key baskets are in, we will have a disc golf course here in the community. So that's going very nice on that. Uh, some construction updates for you, Jerry's already given an update, I wasn't sure he was gonna be back or not, welcome back Jerry, about tomorrow. Cobra project is done, as you know, we got a couple issues we're still working through on that. On the downtown project, all water main had, in phase one, so everything not on Front Street. All water main has been replaced, services is switched over, all the sanitary sewer work has completed on Red Bud, Main and Dewey with those laterals switched over, so there's not much sewer to go through there yet. The road base has been built, so actually the road itself, without the pavement on it, skyline thorough all the way down here and going up that way, so they'll continue on with that pretty soon. Concrete was supposed to be on site this week to start pouring, it's looking like twentieth, they're gonna be on site now. They're right, we start running curb and everything, once curb gets lined, we start running asphalt behind that. On phase two, which is downtown itself on Front Street, all the water main is done, all the service has been replaced, so that's done, they're working on, they're sanitary now. And if you've noticed, that almost two-story black cylinder has been downtown, is now in the ground, stormwater separating unit, and they're still tracking a November completion on that. So a lot of disruption, things are moving, as you guys heard at your last meeting, we're over sixty percent now, between sixty-five and seventy after these last few weeks. Everything's good there, and then we still have the River Street and Red Bud paving to go for the season. As you guys know, we were late in our bidding on that in the bidding cycle, but the things that were required to get done were Liberty and Tara Coop right away for the nature of those. They are still within their contract guidelines we gave for everybody to be able to get their paving done, they just have to get it done here within the next month, so that'll be done here within the next month. That is our game I have for you guys.
Very good, thank you, sir.
I do have. I, I, yeah, for him. I just looked it up on the map, that's what I was doing. Fulton Road, I see that's from Main Street to River Street, so that's a shortcut to miss the Fourth Street.
Definitely going.
Swerving around or down Third Street. There's not really too much we can do about that except for be out there and slow them down. I mean, that's about the only thing we're gonna be able to do, isn't it?
What that does, there's another thing I wanna look at doing, we had this one, Red Bud was going on, if you were coming into town on Red Bud, it was sending you that way automatically, cause when you look at Google Maps or whatever, even if it's thirty seconds quicker, it'll route you that way. So we might want to like, there's some construction going on on that street, we're not gonna put construction in the street, be clear. But maybe that'll start some of the Google Maps and then enforcement beyond that as well, so I think it's a two-step approach for that, is let's fake some construction on the street a little bit and see if we Google ways in Google Maps not to. Cause it was trucks, I think, what it's doing is they're putting in their address where they're going.
Yeah.
And it's, that's thirty seconds quicker, but they see quickest route and they do that.
Right, or they wanna miss the light.
Or one of them, yeah.
Or the light.
Miss the light, miss the turns and miss the construction as a truck driver, I mean, it's straight across, I looked at it, cause I wasn't really sure, but it's straight across.
But actually, if you're coming off of thirty-one or whatever, you know, you just come down, you know, down to River Road, which is zoned for heavy, heavy machinery.
Exactly, Chief, Chief and I'll be, we'll talk about that, folks, strategies on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Like the weight limit, but I, I mean, we, oh my God, you know, I live right across here from I and M and God bless them, what, man? I get the headlights all night long.
And you get the bell at night calls when they're rolling out, yeah.
I get the light on, getting calls, and it's okay, I understand that, but it's the, you know, and every crap, buh buh, buh buh, buh buh, you know? I don't know if there's something.
Chief, I'll talk and see if you've got some ideas.
Thank you. Dan, go ahead.
Um, I lost all track now.
You are on Red Bud.
Oh, yeah, um, the only thing I wanna bring up is the Facebook thing again, I'm, there's a very few people, and it usually doesn't bother me, and I do Facebook because I get a kick out of it most of the time. And I try not to respond to it because it's just feeding and I'm gonna be polite and not call them what I feel they are, but there's a very few number of them, but then they wanna get personal. And, you know, the ones that say everything was like it was back in the eighteen nineties, well, it was mud back then, and for the last seventy-five years, nothing has been done. Nothing has been done.
That's right.
And I mean, nothing has been done really for the last ten years, and he's been cleaning it up, everything he comes up against, you know? When I first became a commissioner, it was a can of worms then, and no matter what question you asked, you had to go through a corn maze to get an answer. And he's getting the answers, so I just wanna let the public know, there's a line that's not gonna be crossed, and everybody knows that I can be a rabid dog, but I haven't been. But if it keeps up on Facebook, you're gonna see me, so just forgive me, or not, I don't care, but there's a line that's not gonna be crossed.
Yeah, lie negativity.
Man, we have to just keep the comments to, sorry, and it's okay, I didn't, I know it's your first time here, it's okay, yeah, you're good, thank you.
But that's, I just wanted to make it very clear that, you know, I've been laying pretty low, I, I bid out, I struck out on Facebook this last weekend, and I don't, I refuse to apologize for, and I'm going to. They crossed a line and it's not gonna be crossed.
I appreciate that.
You know, so, not that I love all of yous, but there's a still a certain protection there, that's gonna happen.
Well, there's a certain level of professionalism, if you guys, if you give me a moment, there, there's a certain level of professionalism and I've spoken about it many times. Dan has gone through some of the most difficult times that a commissioner has gone through, sitting in that seat in his first term and honestly at the beginning of this term. And he wasn't given an opportunity to speak and have his mind heard, uh, but he also was dealing with something that all of us had never seen before, and that was, that, that. The, the web that he had to unweave, that, that, that your team, your, everybody here has had to try to figure out where that ball of yarn, where it stopped and where it ended. And.
It's too gold.
It is, but there's a level of peace that he's become upon him, and if you never would, if you would've seen him before, his, his disgust with how things were run was all for the greater good. And what we see in Buchanan today is, is the honesty and truth of what this city hall does, and if you don't believe me, the videos are out there, go watch them. And you know, if you went to these city meetings, that, that, that the information was not correct, it was not truthful, and it wasn't honest, and it wasn't done in, with malice or ill intent. I don't even think that half the time they knew what the heck they were doing, and Dan called him on their, they called him, he called him out on it. And now we have to deal with people who don't know facts, and they don't have the information, and they're not talking to the right people, and they're not asking us, as commissioners, the information and whether it's not correct. And we sit up here as representatives of the city, and so I appreciate you, Dan, I appreciate that you have.
Well, the thing about it is, we waste a lot of time with the garbage.
We do.
I mean, even my, you know, I try to keep it to a minimum because him and I have had talks, I don't wanna give him extra work.
That's right.
Because somebody ain't big enough to pitch me out.
Right.
They go whining to daddy, you know, and that's basically how it happens, and it doesn't bother me, we're all adults. If you can't take the butt, you would keep your mouth shut, and you're entitled to your First Amendment rights, because I operate, I believe in the First Amendment, but if you're gonna open your mouth, you better have some backup.
I do love this about Dan. Uh, Mr. Money, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could all been here to see you get escorted out, but it's, you know, times have changed.
Oh, that was some good times.
Yeah, I just wanna start off by thanking Harvey and, and all of his crew that put together the community night out. If you worked there, once again this year, uh, they did, they did a really great job. And it was really, really good to see our new city manager down there, going down the slip and slide with the kids, picking out grass.
Picking out grass.
Picking out grass where grass shouldn't be got into, but he was, uh, he was a good sport and he had a lot of fun, I guess. Thank you for the Buchanan Township Fire Department for their donation, uh, for the shop with the cop program, that's, that's really great too. Yeah, and just to go back to that real quick, you know, kudos to all of the people and all the businesses here in town that donated all the food, because nobody, nobody went hungry. There was, there was food from every major restaurant here and, and the donations were great. It's good to see the disc golf course, uh, finally, finally getting around, uh, and they're gonna be able to be doing stuff with that. We haven't heard too much about the, what is it, pick pad?
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Yeah.
Pickleball, uh, that was one of those things that, uh, they came in and we were discussing that quite a bit and nothing has ever transpired, but that's okay too. Because from what I understand, that was, uh, it could be annoying at best if it's in the wrong setting, but, uh, anyway, yeah. Thanks for everybody that showed up, I know, um, Randy went around and introduced, uh, his new cohort to everybody except us, but that's all right.
I told everybody about you.
Everybody except us. Yeah. You came in late today, so anyway, uh, welcome.
Go keep him honest, Frankie.
Once again, uh, I always say this commission works hard, I wanna thank the staff for all they do, because behind the scenes, uh, whether you know it or not, uh, they work extremely hard. I know Tony and I started out at seven o'clock this morning, as well as Patrick, seven o'clock this morning, and Kala, and Kala, so, yeah. Seven o'clock this morning and meetings at the wastewater plant, so, and we all run off to other meetings afterwards, so thank you to the staff. I know Emma's been a great, great relief, so. That's all I've got.
Very good, thank you, Ms. George?
Yes, I also wanna second what Mr. Money was saying, um, I appreciate working with the staff, they make it a lot easier on us, I feel like, so. I feel like we have the best of the best. So, um, yes, disc golf is starting to break ground, super excited about that, and, um, wanna thank everybody that was, has been a part of making that project possible. It took a lot of extra time and planning behind the scenes and I think it's gonna be great, and I'm excited to see it, um, at full, come full circle. Buchanan, Spethen, Family Day again is August twenty-fourth from two to five, we have a lot of cool things planned. I'm gonna look this up real quick, forgive me. Super excited about this event. So we have, it's gonna be held at the Commons and we have live music, um, a reptile encounter, free hot dogs and hamburgers, popcorn and snow cones, free vision test. We have health tents, inflatables for the kids, we have a watermelon bus that's coming, free watermelon, um, and then some local produce, produce giveaways that we're, we're just gonna be handing out. And then free haircuts will be located in the city center. So we have a ton of stuff going on, face ti, uh, face painting to be added, to be determined, so, uh, I'm really excited for this event. We haven't had it since the fall of COVID, but, uh, we're bringing it back and we're super excited to see all the churches in the community working together, and if you guys wanna just come out and see what it's about. Support your town, I think it'll be a cool event, so, and I also wanna say, I was so bummed of missing night, nationalized night out, I've heard nothing but good things about it, but that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Skid?
Harvey, it looked like a good time again. It's my last year missing, I finished my program, so I, I graduated, I can get back down there again, so. Congratulations to the library, it's another great resource for our community, that's good, well-used funding. Big thank you to Barb and Disc Golf Group, Mr. Goodrich is the only name I know on that list, but.
Bill's done an outstanding job organizing all of it, by all means, he's been fantastic, yeah.
Yeah. Exciting, and, and thank you to Barb again, that, that was a zero cost to the taxpayer as soon as they received a grant to put that funding together, so. Putting money to use in our community. Back to school's coming up, so hopefully, I'm assuming our team's on top of it, but with all the construction we have going on, bus, school buses, planning, just making sure we're talking about that. Uh, water sewer meeting is more, you know, you kinda ask about what some of the major impacts this type of construction we're doing is making on our water infrastructure, but. We're already reducing, and I might get the number wrong here, but two to three hundred thousand gallons of treatable waste a day is what we've reduced in volume at our plant already.
Wow.
We take, that's almost twenty, thirty percent reduction already, and what you have, what you're seeing in the ground, that's, that's how bad those pipes were. That's how much water was coming in, groundwater that never needed to be treated, that, that's a, that's major efficiencies, um, that you'll, that'll allow us to continue to make capital investments throughout town, um, more, more quickly. Or, or keep rates stable, things like that, so.
And, and the expansion out, which will help reduce costs.
Yeah, and that's another opportunity to work with our, our neighboring communities to work together.
It's a huge, huge number for that.
So more, more formal to come, once we start seeing normalization of this in the next couple quarters for us to report on, but right out the gate, you know, that's, that's coming up, it hits a triple.
We were, we were averaging between one and one point one million gallons a day, we're between six and eight hundred thousand gallons a day now.
Well, I mean, I've been on it and I've heard, and I thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Because it was always, this one water that we're, this fluid that we're getting was not accounted for.
Yep.
You know, and I, I mean, the word not accounted for is not really the correct word, please don't put that.
Which didn't know where it was coming from, right?
Well, I mean, it's fluid in the system that's, you don't really know exactly where it's coming from, and it's sewage.
We were sold X amount of water and we were getting X amount plus.
Exactly.
So those are real dollars, it's out of your community savings from this project alone. And last thing, as a reminder to my peers, we, we do have Tony's review, if you haven't turned your review paperwork in, I know I was working on it today, but please get that in so we can tell this man if he's doing a good job or not. You know, formally, that, that, so, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you so much. I'd like to say that I have a speech ready that I could trump the last one, but I don't. That one was pretty good, um, I would like to say that, you know, when, when I walk through town and I see people venturing in and out of the businesses and the sidewalks are still available, uh, it is exciting to see that. And for the people on Facebook who think that, that it's, it's fun and comical and finger pointing gets them their likes and clicks and they enjoy that for whatever reason, I can tell you that the business owners are the one that are taking the heat for it. Let that sink in. The business owners downtown are taking the heat because of your inactivity and your lack of cadence to be representatives of this city, to go down and give them your patronage. Because if you think that winning on Facebook is gonna get you what you want, ultimately, you're gonna give the businesses what they don't want, and there's lack of business attention, because they think that you're a representative of this city. And it's not fair, it's not fair to them, it's not fair to anybody who's on that page, and if that's what the page is gonna be about, then I, then that's not something that you would want done if you were a business owner. So I beg you, if you're listening to this, be the representative that you wanna be for Buchanan, and then go down and be a patronage to those, those businesses. And take your hard-earned dollars and give people who are putting their hard-earned dollars back into this city, because I can tell you this, they need it right now. Yeah, I guess that's it. At this time, I'll take a motion through, Jerry. Thank you.
Ignore it again, thank you.
Oh, we didn't address her.
Oh, we didn't address her.
Norma, real quick, the streets, the streets aren't a hundred years old, and we're fixing the hundred-year-old pipes that are underneath them right now.
My street is not a hundred?
No, your street's not a hundred.
Tell me how old it is.
I don't know exactly.
I talked with a person downtown.
Well, you better talk to somebody else.
We can, we can look it up for you though.
Norma, I, I can, I can say with pretty good certainty that your road was not put in. Norma, I can, I can say with pretty good certainty that your road was not put in in nineteen twenty-five. Your physical road was not put in because asphalt didn't exist in nineteen twenty-five.
Oh, no, they were all dirt like they are now.
Well.
Correct, and everything underneath that will be updated.
When we redo the roads, that's part of the reason why this project is so big, is because we are redoing the sewer lines from wall to wall, so all of the business owners are getting a big financial cut because we are doing it wall for wall at the taxpayer expense, which I very much insisted on. And we don't wanna continue to pass the roads, but we don't wanna raise your taxes either. So I forgot we didn't answer you. We got you.
All right, we have a motion and support, so.
Go call, please.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Money? We asked you.
Yes.
Yes.
And we.
Yes.
Jerry, Jerry, you were close. We'd skip right over there.